We can't do that.
To call this meeting in order, roll call please, Mrs. Damon.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Brockman.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Here.
Mr. Kenwisher. Mrs. Puncle. Mrs. Rivera.
Here.
Dr. Wugley.
Here. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United Nations of America and to the republic which stands the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, make a motion.
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Well, it's reminded Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Vision statement, it is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything, not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests this evening. If you would like to address the board on regarding any non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. If you do want to address us, please come up to the podium, state your name and your capacity within the district, and you will get three minutes to address the board. Since it's a non-agenda item, we will not be able to comment it, comment on it, but we will listen to it. Is there anybody here who wants to bring up anything regarding a non-agenda item? Okay, moving on to board members. Ms. Rivera?
I have nothing, thank you.
Puncle?
Looking for me, thank you.
Ms. Brockman, anything?
I have nothing, thank you.
Nothing from me.
Ayers?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Feelsmith?
I have nothing.
Mr. Hyatt?
I had an update slash celebration I wanted to share regarding Booker Bear.
Okay.
For the first time ever, we reached 100% participation. We've been very close in the last couple of years at 98, 99%. This is just a special thanks to our teachers and aides and principals who have stepped in and ensured that all of the kiddos hit their benchmark of reading 10 books and logging those and getting those in. And we tried some new things this year. The biggest thing that was new was our format of celebrating. We tried it within the schools and we did a tour of PV together with our partners from Acentra and from the Bettendorf Library Foundation. It was really cool to see the kids light up in their home school environment. And we had wonderful parent participation and family participation in the celebration. It was perfect timing on Friday, March 3rd, being the kind of a culminating activity for our first graders at the end of that week being Read Across America Week. So it was just very timely. We're very grateful to our partners with Acentra, to Travis Kershaw and Barry Shaw from Acentra, as well as Sharon Sarver from the Bettendorf Library Foundation for their flexibility in trying something new. A good thing for us adults to try on occasion with our kids, and it worked out marvelously. It really was slick from a logistical standpoint, so appreciated the principals working together as well as the teachers with us to have that be, see that through the student's eyes. And while it took a considerable amount of coordination and flexibility, maybe on the adult end, bigger picture, through the student's eyes, it was just a half hour of fun and celebrating the joy of reading. So really want to thank our partners and community members and parents for that.
Tony, were we thought we'd school that way to us? Because normally we would go to the library for that celebration, right? Did other schools do that on that still and we just?
It was an idea we pitched this year for, for that reason. We're really trying to, you know, things, see things through an inclusionary lens. And, you know, there are a number of kiddos who can't make it for various reasons. Some just because they can't, some because they have conflicts on those Saturdays. We also ran into some conflicts with availability in the library. We have, we have outgrown the capacity of the library and the availability of a couple of other venues. We are, we tried this, this year to see how it would go. We're going to reflect on that after Bettendorf has completed their celebration, which will happen in April. Bettendorf is going to try their celebration at their auditorium there and still have the pizza luncheon, try that format there. See if they have the capacity to do that. You know, the last school building we were at was Hopewell and the entire bench seating that is available in the gym was full with parents. So wonderful parent participation. Now that was at the end of the day, school day, more towards the end, so it might have been a little better on a Friday as far as parent work schedules and whatnot. But, but we had wonderful participation in other buildings as well, and so.
I love the fact that it's during the school day, so everybody can participate. I think that's great.
That was something we were excited about, was no kid would be excluded unless they're sick.
Great, wonderful. And I know that several of us were asked to participate in the Read Across America and reading to the students. And I think several of us who had time during that week were able to do that. Several board members did then. That was really, really fun and rewarding. And what was great was after reading the book, they had a chance to ask several of us questions. And the questions just didn't stop. They just kept going until they had to stop and say, okay, you guys, we need to let him go and, you know, this time is up. But the questions that were asked were really, were very interesting and they were very curious and it was a great experience. I hope that we can continue to participate in years to come because it was as fulfilling for me, I think, as it was for them. Great, Ms. Kenyon, anything?
I do not have anything, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Damon? Mr. Struce?
Just condolences to the George Stecker family. I don't know if you're familiar with George Stecker, but George was a teacher for us, business teacher at the high school for 35 years. He passed away at the young age of 92. He did not start teaching in the district till in his early 30s because he was in the armed forces prior to that and also owned businesses in downtown Davenport for a long period of time. And I had the privilege of eating lunch with him for two years when I was teaching at the high school level, so got to know him real well. And I just remember him always, every day he'd see me, hey, coach, how you doing? And even when he'd come here for subbing, he'd still call me coach. And he was still subbing with us about five years ago. So at the young age of 88, he was still subbing. So just a great guy. And I know Debbie had some great stories about him because she had him as a teacher also when she went through Pleasant Valley. Want to share any of those Debbie or not, but just like, good man and lost a good one.
I was going to be a social worker until I took his class and then I became an accountant. And he kept a list when he passed the PTA exam. We sent him a letter and he wrote in on the list of the students that passed the PTA exam. He said he put your photo up if you were the CFO of General Motors.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, he was, he was a car fanatic, so that would make sense, so.
It was great that he was part of our district for as long as he was. And he devoted some of his time of his career to us. Seems like a great role model. Wonderful. Before I get to Mr. Zimmer, I just wanted to say one other thing. So I've been making my way around the, around some of the PTA meetings, especially at the elementary schools. And one of the things that, one of the common themes that I've heard from several of the PTA meetings that I've been to is that ever since we've come back from COVID, there's been a little bit less engagement of parents being involved in the PTA. And so I think in the, in the coming months, I may work with Mr. Struce a little bit on coming up with some ways for us to try and get more parental involvement back again with the PTA. Because, because if we don't get as much involvement, some of the programs that have been commonly occurring on an annual basis in certain schools haven't been able to be had because they don't have enough volunteers. And it's a great way to volunteer, to be involved in the school and especially hearing all these people who are involved in the Booker Bear reading. And we obviously have parental involvement, but maybe they just don't understand that our PTAs across the schools really do need rental involvement in order for us to continue some of these programs. So hopefully we'll be able to get more engagement. And I was going to at least mention it at this board meeting. So if anybody's watching, if they want to get involved, they can contact their local PTA president or administration and see if they might be able to come. And they don't have to necessarily share anything, but they can at least just help out with certain things. And that would be really nice because we have a lot of dedicated parents who are part of the PTA that have been doing it for several years now. And when their children move on, they're going to have to move on to the next school and then it'll leave vacancies. So we need more parents to be involved so that that transition will be easy and our kids won't miss out on, students won't miss out on, on things that have initially occurred in the past. So just a shout out to anybody who's listening, if they really want to be involved, please contact your PTA members. There'll be more than anybody to hear from you and see what might work best in your schedule to help them out on different programs.
For Mr. Zimmer, what do they want to add? Just remind, Debbie reminded me, just congratulations to our girls' basketball team, state champions. They'll be at our next school board meeting. They couldn't make it tonight, but they'll be at the next one. And also congratulations to our boys' basketball team. When you look at the success they had and making the state championship, does, it's rare when both your teams make it to the state championship. And our boys lost to the eventual state champions. So that always makes you feel a little better too when that transpires. But look forward to seeing our girls here at our next board meeting.
So rare. I think this was the first time they went the same year.
Pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Very awesome.
Excellent. Okay, Mr. Zimmer?
Very good. I'd like to just add into your comment about PTA because for those listening, junior high and high school PTA are also extremely important. They're not, their focus isn't quite as much on the fundraising piece. As a matter of fact, not very little at all on that end of it, but they provide like right after prom. It would not happen. And teacher recognition and just a whole variety of items that require help and assistance on that end that are not necessarily associated with fundraising at all, just needing help. So again, I appreciate you saying something.
On the recognition side, since the last, since our last meeting, there's been, there has been a lot going on. So in the area of speech and drama, on Saturday, March 11th, eight events competed at the state individual events competition. All eight received a division one with six of the eight receiving straight ones. And out of that, two individuals were selected to perform at the all-state festival on Monday, March 27th. Charles Newton in acting and Cara Bowman in solo musical theater. So again, congratulations to all that participated in the individual state speech competition. Staff recognition on March 3rd and 4th, the Iowa Football Coaches Association recognized Pleasant Valley head football coach Rusty Van Wetzinger as the 5A Regional Coach of the Year during their annual coaches clinic. Again, congratulations to him and his staff. That is a year round. You don't leave that sport, or any of them anymore. The success is just, it's constant. I mean, you just don't do it during the season. So again, congratulations to coach and his staff. And then finally, near and dear to my heart, remains Career and Technology Education, if you didn't know that already. 2022 Pleasant Valley High School alum Clayton Shelton. Completed his US Department of Labor High School CNC setup programmer, milling and turning registered apprenticeship with Arconic Manufacturing. And Clayton is here with us tonight. And he has visited with us when he first started. Then he stopped in and gave us an update as to how it was going. And now here we are at the end. So with that, I'm going to present him with this certificate and allow him to kind of give an update as to how this has been going. Clayton?
Thank you. Congratulations.
So in that amount of time, I know that Mr. Struce and I were visiting with Clayton ahead of time. And Clayton, why don't you give us an update just how it's been going?
So I guess I, I'll just start from the, from the start of all this. All of a sudden, it was just this call that just started, hey, I'm Mike Zimmer. And would you like to, you know, I've, I've seen you in your classes at high school and your machining and your welding. And would you like to try out for this apprenticeship for machining and CNC machining? And I said, yes. Never would I have known that I would be as far as I am right now. But I will have to say that Pleasant Valley School District as a whole, I have been here since kindergarten. And I've never felt like I have not learned anything. And I've never felt like you guys haven't ever supported me. And especially through this apprenticeship, I felt like I've been supported by you guys more than ever. And I honestly wouldn't be where I'm at right now if it wasn't for all of you. So it's more of a thank you guys for what all of you have done. As just a general update, I go to work from seven in the morning until three o'clock in the afternoon. And I get off and I go home. Just like the most of you guys, it's just the workforce. And I just recently finished my last class. Progressing towards my journeyman's card out at the Belong Technology Center, which I know PV's apprenticeship also goes out there as well. And wonderful school. And I just finished that last class just before the spring break. So now I'm done with all of my college classes required for my journeyman's card.
Which one? Tell them that, because this is a new one.
Right. So I have met the requirements for the high school's apprenticeship program. And I just recently met the hours as well. So I have finished that. That's what that certificate is. But I'm transitioning into Arconic's apprenticeship program, which is another Department of Labor certificate. It's a journeyman's card and I can take that nationwide and use that as well. I just, I thank you guys for what all of you have done. I can't say it enough. Thank you. Do any of you have any questions for me?
Why don't you share a little bit, I mean, you said it's seven to three, but it's just not at seven to three. You've been very, very dedicated to make this happen. So why don't you share your work ethic and what you've done to make this possible?
So as an apprentice, we have different rules at work that we have to obey by. And Arconic has to obey by those as well. Set up. Additionally, I am in the union, the local 105 steelworkers. But I'm not required to work weekends. I'm required to work Monday through Friday. But my dedication to getting my apprenticeship done, I have been volunteering for as many weekends as I can. So additionally, I show up to work on Saturday and Sunday. And I have been working 56 hours a week, which is not required. But I do it because honestly, I love my job. It's never boring and it's never the same. It's always a challenge.
I'll just tell you that Clayton's grandfather works with me on the airplane. And so when I'm over there visiting with that, he'll always tell me, Clayton. And his grandfather will have lunch and Clayton's telling him what he's doing. He says, I can't believe what they're having him do as far as the size of equipment and this, and what he's moving and doing. I think, I, I think it's hard for anybody to imagine. They didn't hold back.
No. When you're in the high school apprenticeship, there are rules with that as well. You are a CNC machinist in the high school apprenticeship and they respect that. You are not allowed to use certain machinery that is out of your restrictions. Once you're out of that, you're off the chain. You apply to all the machinery, all the tools, all the equipment. So as soon as I graduated high school and had finished my classes through the high school, I had to learn how to use a forklift, how to operate two different types of cranes, how to operate a flatbed truck and a GLG lift in one week. And now I work with and around a lot of potential dangers, but Arconic's onboarding has taught me a lot. Safety is a number one priority through Arconic. And the transition was seamless in my eyes. So keep the apprenticeships going. Just as an example, I mean, two weeks ago, there was a major malfunction in, four weeks ago, sorry. There was a major malfunction in one of the mills that kept this entire line from running. And as our job as maintenance machinists, we have to get this going as soon as possible. And these parts, this part of this machine that broke was produced in 1946 in, I believe it was Germany. And they are no longer a company. And so you no longer can buy that. So we have to work with prints that are in German from 1950. So it's a 14,000 pound object that we had to rig up and set up and machine. And it was me and another, one of my journeymen that I follow, working on it on day shift. And then it was two other journeymen working on the night shifts.
So you were required to learn German in two days.
Clayton is also a great example. We talk about personal finance and that kind of stuff. Just listening to Clayton get his retirement system set up. And he was sharing with us that Arconic contributes 6%. He contributes a wee bit more than that, I'm sure. So he's, he's got a lot going. So anyway, it's great.
How long will it take you to finish the journeyman?
So it's 6,400 hours. And they project that you will do 2,000 hours a year. So roughly three years. And they have so many classes that you have to complete. And the nice part about the high school to journeyman is that most of the classes are the same. So I didn't have to take as many classes after I transitioned because I'd already taken them. But 6,400 hours, meet the requirements for the class. And actually, you can take your journeyman's test after you meet the requirement on classes, but you aren't recognized as a journeyman at Arconic until you complete their training, which is the 6,400 hours.
So I'm sure Mike and Mary are on this, but as, as we consider underclassmen that this might be a good option for, how do you think that we go about letting them know that this is an option and bringing this to their attention? Do you have any ideas? You know, Mike approached you, but is there any other, are you, do you have any ideas regarding that?
So personally, I never intended on being here. I wanted to be a civil engineer and I wanted to go to Iowa State. I took classes in high school to set myself up for that. I took two years of Spanish. I took my CTE credits. I took stuff that set me up to go to college. Then I changed my mind. I want to join the military. Went to MEPS, I took ASVAB, did all that. And then my, my freshman year, I did a tour of the John Deere Harvester over in Moline there. And that was thanks to you. And that was just mind boggling to me to see this environment. It was all brand new to me. You know, I'm 14 years old, it's a massive factory. And I thought that was pretty neat. And then my junior year, I went to a job expo down at the Riverside, yeah, that is? And then my junior year, I went to a job expo down at the Riverson, yeah, that is, yes, thanks to her. And I saw that, wow, there is a lot of jobs that are waiting for you. And college isn't necessarily the only way to do it. I saw electricians, I saw pipe fitters, I saw plumbing, carpenters, machining. And uh that just kind of raised my awareness even more. And then I got the call from Zimmer and I took off. But I took as many CTE classes as I could, I was very involved. I took all the intros to welding, manufacturing, I took woods classes, I took auto maintenance, I took construction skills. And there are kids that will take those classes just, that's any class. But the teachers in those classes have really nice, they're really dedicated. And the teachers that you guys hire are, they've worked in that field and then now they are teaching. They can tell you personal experiences from that. And I feel like that's one thing is that your teacher can almost connect to you on a level below them being a teacher. He can talk to you as a, as another person. And so it was like a combination of going to these job expos that you guys provide and just the teachers being teachers that really brought it up to my attention that, hey, this is what I want to do. And as far as what can you guys do to make it, um maybe a little more obvious to those, I feel maybe you can do a night once a year where maybe you bring people in and you talk about what jobs there are. I guess maybe you have your own little mini job expo. You really wa- raise awareness to what there is other than a four-year college. It doesn't have to be anything serious, it can just be information that your teachers give out, it can be information that you bring in, give out to the students. Cause I feel like maybe not all students receive that there are jobs outside of a four-year college. And so that's why they don't get involved in stuff like this. It's maybe not that they don't want to, it's that they don't know about it.
Can I add too for that one, Clayton's folks have been fantastic and very receptive. And I think to address your question, I think that getting that word out to the parents that these are terrific careers. If you talk about the opportunities that he has now and his setup for the future. What he's making right now is as much as what that college graduate is going to make for to eight years, depending on how long they get through it. Are just starting out at on there and he's already doing that. If parents hear that kind of communication, I think that then the students are going to be more receptive to that as well.
I agree.
Clayton, let me ask you two questions, cause Mary, you made an excellent point. First of all, when you talked about going and being an engineer, civil engineer at Iowa State, and you told your parents for the first time, like, I'm not sure I want to do that. Mary said they're very supportive, but did their first question say, are you sure, do you really want to do that, did they question you on that? Or they like, go for it Clayton?
So I'm an only child, so it was, it was my parents' first time, you know? And uh everything was new to them. But my, my dad owns his own business and he grew up in a family where you had to go to college. And he went to college and he dropped out a semester before graduation. And it wasn't that he didn't want to finish it, it was just that he found out he was gonna be in a, an accountant. And he figured that if he just kept his determination towards owning his own business and starting up, that's what he enjoyed. So that's what he did. And my parents have always been supportive of, of me to do what I want, as long as it's reasonable. And so from a young age, it was always you do what you want to do, we're gonna stand behind you. So when I brought up the fact that I wanted to go to Iowa State, my mom got right behind that. Said, hey, when are we gonna do tours, when are we gonna do this, here's the information you need. And when I told her, hey, I want to do this, I want to go do the apprenticeship, she said, alright, you go do that. So, and she'd been supportive of me, my dad's been supportive of me, everybody, so.
So the second question I have then is, you are making a very good salary right now, no doubt about it. And you're very young, have you already saw like where this, I mean, you have a good head on your shoulders, you're very articulate, very smart. And you have a passion, excitement, do you see that that could take you further along in that company twenty years from now, thirty years from now? That you don't hit this plateau?
Correct. Arconic has kind of two ways. A lot of guys will stay at their job level, so once you hit journeyman, they'll stay journeyman for the rest of their career. And the reason is, is because everybody earns the same in a union, same job titles, okay? So everybody's the same, there's no discrimination against each other. And they just come to work every single day, they do their job, they go home. Benefits are good, retirement's good, that's all they want to do. But for those, and they're protected under the union to do that, they don't have to go any further. But a good example is a guy at Arconic that I know, he worked there for ten years. And he worked overtime and Arconic offered him a spot as a tech. So I am a union member, I am an hourly paid uh worker. There are salary paid people, employees under Arconic and they do not have the same benefits as union. So they have to make sacrifices, they have to come in when Arconic calls them, but they do it because they're determined. They want to make the workplace better for us and for them. And this guy, Arconic offered him what he was making with overtime as salary. Guaranteed him an extra week of vacation and he took this job as a tech. Why did they do that? Because they can, because they saw that he was a good worker, he had determination. So yes, you don't have to hit the plateau, you can go beyond, it's just up to you.
Um, so how early on um do you think that um most students should be introduced to something like this? Um, right away in their freshman year or?
Sooner.
Sooner.
Yes, I would say, don't just pile it on, because that can deter people. You kind of want exposure, because then you're kind of bringing that information over time. So if you could go to the junior high and kind of expose kids to that, I remember my junior high, when I was there, I took a class with uh Hausmann and uh is it Mr. Bishop? Yes, and I did woodworking there and robotics. And I'd grown up doing a lot of woodworking with my grandpa, my dad, so I'd already known a lot. But these are kids that maybe have never done this before and the fact that they're being able to do this at thirteen years old, I mean, that's pretty impressive on your guys' part. And the fact that you can maintain the safety and give them that exposure to the CTE side of classes is really good. So if you really want to maybe jumpstart it a little bit, you could improve some of those classes at the junior high. So maybe have individual classes for possibly welding or woodworking or robotics. Um, you could also tell the teachers to tell the kids what they can do. I'm not saying that that doesn't happen, I'm just saying information is kind of key. Junior high is a great place to start. Um, and then in high school, high school's a little bit of a different game. It's way more professional in a, in a way. And you start to realize, hey, I gotta actually, gotta man up, you know? So information in high school is always good, uh that, that exposure in high school really does take off uh way faster.
I think I could ask you questions all night long, but I want to ask you one more. At the junior high, at the high school, did you have a chance to use the simulators, the welding simulators ever?
Yes.
Do you feel like that would be something good to place at the junior high for kids just to have the experience of the different types of welds or the, how to get the motion of it, the skills?
Absolutely. Um, obviously, you probably will never be able to bring a welder into the junior high. It's just the way that works, it's kind of a little bit over the top, uh to maintain that safety. But the welders are great opportunity that you bring that up, because that is the absolute first thing you do in that intro class is the, how's, okay, so Hausmann was my teacher, he brought out, and everybody put on your uh, your shields. He showed us a weld, and then he taught us about welding, showed us videos, made us read books. And he said, go do it on simulator, show me that you can do it on simulator, show me that you know safety. And then you're gonna do it for real. So yeah, simulators are great. And nowadays, with the way technology is, it's spot on.
Once you do get your journeyman uh hours and your, your um training through Arconic, have you thought about possibly being a, a trainer for um a student from one of the high schools?
I have not, but I love this area, I'll probably raise my kids here. I will never move until they probably go through this school district, uh just because I personally have gone through it and I know how it is. So if that opportunity ever arrives, I'd absolutely love to be a journeyman who is teaching an apprentice from PV or another school.
We'd like you to be our spokesman.
I have a good friend that is a professor of engineering at a university out west. And I've told him about you because I am so impressed. And he said, I would rather make an engineer out of a student like that than an engineer that comes to me with straight A's in calculus. As a kid like you, there are no limits. So, you know, unless you are gonna come back and help us with these job fairs every year, I would love to hear back from you, five years, ten years, just to hear what's up. Cause you're so impressive and so exciting.
Always be around.
Good. Congratulations and, and thanks for, for um representing Pleasant Valley very well as being a good studio, a good um dedicated worker for Arconic.
As always, thank you, Mary, thank you, Mike, making all this possible, well done.
Anything else, Mr. Zimmer?
No.
Okay, wonderful, all right. Well, uh, moving on then, um, we will go to our consent agenda. Are there any questions on Mr. Heinz's consent, he means consent agenda, if not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to prove the consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Conkle, that the consent agenda is presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, approval of bills, general fund.
I move that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-four cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskin, second by Mr. Ayers, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nutrition fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one hundred and nine thousand, twenty-four dollars and eighty cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Conkle, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Elementary junior high activity fund.
I move the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Mr. Ayers, that the elementary junior activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? High school activity fund.
I move that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-six cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Rivera, that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Management fund.
I move the management fund warrants be issued in a total amount of one thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman, that the management forms, management fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? Um, I just asked a question um to um Brian and Mr. Pling, Mr. Streus and Mr. Pling Smith regarding the management fund, cause there was some airplane insurance, if you guys had seen that. And um that is actually gotten, is received in case the plane does get taxi from what I understand. And usually our insurance just come from the man- management fund, which is why it didn't come out of the um student construction fund, which a lot of the other airplane expenses have come out of, so just gonna give you guys a heads up.
Mike Yang. Just to add on to that, I needed to get ready for when the kit is no longer a kit. When it starts to become a functioning plane, meaning then there's two levels. One is when it can move and it's still on the ground, they call that ground. Uh, and that has another level, and then as soon as it becomes airworthy, then we gotta move over to in-flight. So it's a tiered system, out of the box, all right, not a problem, then all of a sudden it's together. The power plant's installed, it's able to taxi up and down, whatever, that's another level, and then once it goes airborne, we got another one.
Since they're just about to start on the engine now, from what I understand, that's why we have to get the new insurance.
Yeah, we, we'll stay with, um, cause it's still, there's still stuff in boxes and it's, they're still putting the fuselage together. So we'll stay at the lowest level until they let me know that, hey, we're gonna start partnering the motor with it. And then all of a sudden I say, okay, now we're gonna move to the next level, so.
And just, you know, the next level's about three thousand dollars or so, that leaves the next insurance up, so. This one, this one goes away and the other one goes up, the three thousand.
And we don't want the, the flight one is just enough to get it certified, and then I need a buyer, anybody wanna buy a plane?
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Capital projects fund.
I move the capital project fund warrants be issued in the total amount of a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars and, hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Brockman, that the capital project fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pepper fund.
I move the Pepper fund warrants be issued in a total amount of one thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-two cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Rivera, that the Pepper fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Student construction fund.
I move that student construction fund warrants be issued in the total amount of sixty-one dollars and eighty-four cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Conkle, that the student construction fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Internal service funds.
I move that internal service fund warrant sixty-four eighty-four to sixty-four eighty-nine be issued in the total amount of ninety-one thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and seventy cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskin, second by Mr. Ayers, that the internal service fund warrant sixty-four eighty-four to sixty-four eighty-nine be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Trust fund.
I move the trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventeen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Mr. Ayers, that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have no old business, but um starting with our first item on the new business is the teacher leadership uh system or the T L S system. And I know Mrs. Sire's here, along with Mr. Hyatt, Ms. Kenyon and Mr. Zimmer are gonna be talking about this. And we do have a handout as well. So who wants to put the lead on this?
Yes.
Yes.
His will.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about the teacher leadership system. I'm Stephanie Sire and I'm the coordinator of the pre-K twelve program here at PV. Um, so I'm excited to talk to you about how we're progressing towards our goals and also towards our district initiatives. Also about the positions that we have in place and how the program's evolved over our time here at PV. So this is actually our eighth year of teacher leadership in Pleasant Valley. And in those eight years, we've had two hundred and sixty-seven teachers serve in leadership roles, which is pretty outstanding. Uh, we've gone ahead and aligned our Pleasant Valley goals to the state T L S goals. So you'll see we really focus on five areas. The first one is supporting new teachers to our district and we do that through the mentoring program. The second is retaining our current teachers and our new teachers. Uh, providing meaningful professional development for all educators in the system. And then building the leadership capacity and the skills of those educators, both as leaders and as classroom teachers. Because you see the fifth one is enhancing instructional practices in the classroom. So our teacher leaders receive a lot of professional development on the onset, uh, in advance of all teachers receiving that training. So we put the mission statement and the vision of our school district at the center of all teacher leadership decisions. Um, if we're preparing students to be succeeding in a diverse global society, and if we're continuing to be committed to excellence, the best way to do that is supporting our teachers to, um, innovate and try new things in the classroom and to do that alongside the partners of their instructional coaches and other teacher leaders who are engaging in new creative ideas. So they are encouraged to enhance and refine their skills through these career opportunities presented in teacher leadership. And that's, um, allowing us to have better outcomes for students, so increasing that student achievement. So listed here are the C S I P universal instruction goals in our comprehensive goal improvement plan. And teacher leaders have spent many years, uh, learning about these things, implementing them in the classroom and are still learning about these things and implementing them daily in the classroom. So as I said before, our teacher leaders receive training ahead of all staff. This allows them the opportunity to really pilot and trial things in the classroom so that they can give us direct and honest feedback of what's working, what's not working, um, how to get around uh, different step points that they experienced so that we can, when we deliver it to all staff, uh, deliver them the best message and most meaningful for students. I did wanna direct your attention to the student centered coaching training. This is what our coach, instructional coaches center their work around. So in student centered coaching, you're able to set a student centered goal. You're collecting student evidence and data around that goal. And in four to six weeks of a coaching cycle where that, uh, coach is in the classroom partnering with the teacher, they're able to analyze how students are doing, um, in response to mastering those goals. So really data driven and we're proud of that, um, for student outcomes. And then the habits of mind interaction training, I've spoken to in the past about our work with habits of mind interaction. The universal constructs, workaround PLCs, curriculum and instruction, A I W, authentic intellectual work at the secondary level. The innovation configuration map is actually a self-assessment tool for teachers, which we started piloting at the elementary level through T L S and now it's, uh, for all staff at the elementary level. Teachers are able to look at a list of instructional practices and say their confidence level about how they feel they're implementing that in the classroom. So it's a good reflection tool and it provides some resources. But the one that we're most excited about moving forward right now is that depth of knowledge rigor by design, not by chance. Dr. Karen Hess is an expert in her field, nationally recognized, um, in deepening learning for students and experiences for kids through curriculum instruction and assessment. And we have the opportunity through T L S funds to bring her to talk to our teacher leaders in June and then again in August of this year. So we're really excited to dig in. Our instructional coaches are learning right now in advance of our teacher leaders, so feeling great about that. But I knew, I know you would like to hear all this from me, but I thought it would be best to hear it from the kids themselves. So we're just gonna show you a short two-minute video I put together to see how teacher leadership is working in the buildings. Um, you'll see some C S I P goals in action as you watch this video specifically around students articulating what learning they're experiencing. They're able to co-construct rubrics around the Iowa Core Standards as early as second grade and younger, but the video shows a second grade student. Um, and they're able to talk about tracking their data and their progress towards mastering the standards and they're engaged, so I hope you enjoy.
How does it feel to make rubrics of this filter?
Well, it feels good because, um, normally, um, we don't like getting big stuff. What are we gonna do?
How do the rubrics help you?
Um, so like, they help us because like if we're stuck, we can look at the book. And it tells us like how, what we can do to get us. Because, um, it's the setup school and I like probably have to figure out like the vision. And we have to try and figure out who stole like the computer monitor. That's like, it's like, it's like, we're kinda like playing a spy.
Give the pyramid a point. A small stone pyramid called capstone is placed on top. This capstone is commonly placed full. So there are many pyramids that have left because the tuning are receiving.
Okay, ready? Do you think you got it? Yeah. There you go.
Things do wanna go back to elementary school.
Great, well, and just hearing this young man speak about his work at Arconic, I mean, you saw problem solving in action and that balloon car was harder than it looks to actually move. So that was an accomplishment. Yeah, those elementary students are fun, for sure. But I just, I'm really proud of teacher leadership because I think that it gives teachers, um, space to be creative and innovative and have partners alongside them to try new things, which ultimately will help us reach our district mission and vision. So now that you've heard some things about what we do, I thought it'd be important for you to see who we are. I know it looks overwhelming, I'm not gonna talk about all the parts, but these are all the positions in our pre-K twelve teacher leadership program, so there's quite a few. Um, but I'm just going to talk about how our system's been able to be responsive to current needs and future needs of our district, uh, based on teacher feedback and administrative feedback. So in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, at the district level, we added a full release instructional innovative technology coach, Beth Campbell at the time. And then a year later, we were able to mirror that position at the secondary level. So Cassie Peterson is now serving in that role, still in that same position as our innovative secondary technology coach. In two thousand eighteen, nineteen, there was a need for additional instructional coach support at the elementary level. So we split my role, the coordinator role, in half. So I served as half coach, half coordinator, where Tony Runkel served as a seven-twelve coordinator at the time. And we also saw a need at the junior high and high school to support professional development more than before. So our building leads were new positions that were hired to plan and facilitate professional development for staff. And then in two thousand twenty-one, we opened Forest Grove and we returned to the sole coordinator position instead of the split role. And then you see all the grade level strategists at Forest Grove as well as a specialized supporter. So we would be responsive to the needs there. And then just as last year, we added two full release curriculum instruction and assessment lead facilitators, Thomas Lovejoy and Kim Verhecke. So their offices are here at Belmont, they work closely with Mr. Hyatt, Mr. Zimmer around curriculum and they also work closely with our teachers to align the standards and really make sure we're refining our curriculum, so we have a guaranteed viable curriculum in place. And then next year, we are excited because we're adding two full release special education instructional coaches. Our programming is growing and with the addition of Jill's position, we've been so grateful to have her here. These positions will really give specialized support to our special education teachers. So they'll move from the building coach rosters onto the special ed instructional coach rosters. So in total, we had this past year a hundred and nine teacher leadership positions. But T L S also oversees the mentoring program. So through mentoring, we had fifty-eight mentoring leadership positions for a total of a hundred and sixty-seven leadership roles this past year. And that actually accounts for thirty-five percent of our teaching staff, which is incredible because our state goal is twenty-five percent participation. So it's really good we can meet that benchmark. So I know that was a lot of positions, but those positions all have an impact on helping us achieve our goals. So I did provide you a handout that shows our five T L S goals and then data that supports how we're progressing towards those, those various goals. So we're having a really positive impact on PLCs because our teacher leaders serve a vital role in professional learning communities at all the levels. So over ninety percent of pre-K twelve teachers agreed or strongly agreed that, um, instructional coaches, instructional strategists and collaborative leads are having a strong impact there. The next piece is professional development. Over eighty-five percent are agreeing that professional development is providing them collaborative opportunities with their colleagues and it's impacting student learning in their classroom, which is pretty amazing. And teacher leaders do a whole lot, um, in planning and preparing that, facilitating that to meet the needs of teachers. But one thing I think we should all be proud of is our teacher retention rate. For the last three years, we have ninety-one percent teacher retention, which is outstanding. And I think it's in support of all of you and also the support that they get from their administrators. Uh, but they also have a mentor for the first two years they're with our district. Even if they're an experienced teacher, they get a mentor for the first eight weeks they're in our district. And we do gather the new teachers after school for various sessions, so they have additional training. And pictured here, you see, uh, the Iowa Teacher of the Year Sarah Russell able to speak to our new teachers and give them some tips and tricks about how to move their practice forward. And I wanted to touch on our instructional coaches. We have thirteen full release instructional coaches and they have a direct impact on student achievement, which I talked to you a little bit about when I described the student centered coaching model. You'll see on the right-hand side that our six elementary building coaches averaged twenty-two coaching cycles per coach last year, which is pretty incredible because five of six of them were in their first year of coaching. So just the onboarding and support that they received as coaches was really powerful. At the secondary level, five of our coaches completed a total of sixty-six coaching cycles. And then our two innovative tech coaches, their role looks a bit different. They do a lot of right now, in the moment support to provide alongside teachers and they also did twenty-three coaching cycles. But if you look at this survey data from two hundred and twenty-one of our teachers, instructional coaches are, the teachers are agreeing or strongly agreeing that coaches are having a huge impact in all of these areas. So we're really proud of their work and grateful to have those positions in place. And how we do it, now that you know a little bit more about who we are and what we do, um, I'm proud of our district for providing professional learning, job embedded and inside the school day and outside of the school day. The top two pictures are, you're probably familiar with already, elementary math studio days where we gather professional learning communities in the same building. So the one you see is at Pleasantview and kindergarten and teachers learn from each other and observe students in a live lesson setting and then go back and debrief on their experience. In the top right, you see curriculum workdays, some of these are in the school day and many of them are outside of the school day. So teachers gather as a district team or as a department team and write curriculum, refine curriculum and continue to create. The bottom two are new this year. The elementary did T L S instructional rounds, so the, what you see here is a kindergarten classroom and all the kindergarten teacher leaders across the district, six of them, were able to gather in one room with instructional coach support and see a live lesson with students and debrief on this new innovative, um, experience. They were working on, uh, writing rubrics for the students. So students were looking at the rubric and re- refining their work. And then the pre-K twelve teacher leadership academies occurred three times after school this year and that was new. We just really wanted to differentiate and provide further learning on how they can become better leaders. A lot of our work is on the instruction part, so this is how to facilitate adult learning. And then through our teacher leadership contract, we're able to host summer trainings. So what you see right there is about ninety elementary teacher leaders and administrators gathering together in the summer to work on, um, they receive new training and then they worked on their curriculum. We also provided the August new teacher in-service for four days. A lot of our teacher leaders present at that session. And then our innovative tech coaches prepare and annotate video clips for teachers and share it out district-wide, what's happening in the classroom and what best practice they're seeing to be able to highlight that and replicate it across the district. So that is all that I had for you, but you know where to find me, so I'll take questions now or, um, you know, you can email me or call me at any time.
I would be remiss, I think I can speak on behalf of Mike and Jill and just thanking Stephanie for her outstanding leadership in this role. Um, there are a lot of instances that are, are thankless and a lot of behind the scenes work that goes into, uh, being a leader of leaders. And, and, uh, just her continual focus on being a learning leader, that the learning never stops, that's what good leaders do. They can keep on learning. Um, I'm just so grateful of her leadership with regard to that. There's a couple other notables that I would just wanna, um, I guess capitalize on within that, that within the new teacher support, something we hear routinely is how strong our new teacher support, our mentorships are. Teachers, specifically from teachers that have come from other states or even other districts with, within our state and maybe have experienced a year of mentorship somewhere else. And then they come here and undoubtedly, we get positive feedback about how they have been overwhelmingly supported. Mistakes happen, balls are dropped, we're, uh, entity of humans, but it is just overwhelmingly positive, the feedback that we get every year and that I saw as a principal and now in this role too. Um, as I conducted one-on-ones with all of our new teachers, that just rang true in those conversations. Um, also, I, I just think the system's thinking, um, Stephanie does a magnificent job of having a systemic lens and thinking big picture and the intentionality of getting voices at the table, um, things that I noted, just input with things like, uh, curriculum instruction and assessment, those curriculum instruction and assessment workdays and the systemic, the, the equitable representation that we strive for, um, in order to have equitable voice at the table and, and get things coming in and going back out across our system in ways that help strengthen our curriculum instruction and assessment. Um, and then also down to, uh, budgetary decisions that are made. It helps, um, I'm learning new in this role, it, it helps me advocate for what our teachers need. Um, and it helps me connect with our, our principals, our principals and coaches work so closely. I am very confident that our TLC, our T L S system is second to none in protecting the integrity of our instructional coaches so that they can truly lead learning in the buildings as opposed to babysit or manage some things that I know are happening in other districts around us and across the state. We're good intentions with this money, but when it comes down to actual lea- leading the learning and knowing the scientific research behind the impact of going through an instructional, uh, coaching cycle, our coaches are able to do that and I appreciate our administrators' efforts, um, to protect, um, and insulate that and, and make sure that that's, that good work is, continues to happen even amongst sub shortages. That's the last point that I wanted to make. Um, you can see the value that our teachers see, not only in those very strong results in the ninety percent range of agree and strongly agree. Um, but they, they value things like the curriculum instruction and assessment workdays. That's an area where Thomas coming on new and, and Kim with the secondary, they too are doing a lot of behind the scenes work that is happening to look at our system and develop from, from within with, with that teacher voice and choice. And then, um, also at the elementary level, the studios, overwhelmingly, we, we plowed through that sub shortage thing that we all experienced in, in November, we found ways because teachers value, um, that studio experience, that on, on hand or hands-on and job embedded PD that happens through that experience. So again, all thanks to Stephanie for, for leading that. Um, I'm very grateful for having this system and with the, the current challenges that are coming in the way of a budget perhaps in some districts with this, I am confident that we will continue to thrive with teacher leadership because of the intrinsic value that is there.
It was very timely that all of you.
It was very timely that all of you, at this point in this time, are at least aware, if you're asked by your constituents, hey, what's this TLS business going on? And, you know, I've heard there's a bill to do this or that and the next thing. And what Steph Sire just demonstrated to you is the proper way that the funds were supposed to be used in its initial inception, and that, I'll tell you what, we would be in a world of hurt if those funds went away. And we brought this up with our Teachers Association to tell them that if you go and say, oh, now you can use those funds for teacher salaries or something like that, all you're gonna do is pit one school against another. And we are not gonna go down that path. And we want to encourage other districts to, if they're having trouble or not sure what a framework would look like, that what you just saw in that little diagram, there you go. And, and the feedback I hear, that proves it right there. So I thought it was, Stephanie, thank you. And I hope you feel a little better. Challenge or asked, you can answer.
Stephanie, do you coordinate with other, other, other people in your position at other schools, districts, neighboring us, or?
Yes, yeah, the North Scott Coordinator and I set up a monthly meeting with the neighboring districts. We have about three that come regularly, but we invite eight about.
I can't imagine what your, what your daily day looks, I mean, if I, if I said, what's your typical day look like and the amount of people that you coordinate with and talk to and different events, I'm sure it's, it's always something different, I'm sure.
Yes, yes, which is exciting because I like that challenge. Moving into the pre-K twelve position was a new challenge for me because my whole experience was elementary. So I've learned a lot in the past two years that I've been seven, twelve also. But yeah, just moving from one place to another, changing that hat out and meeting the needs of teachers because they come with various needs daily, so we support them and the students for sure.
Yeah, well, I know Stephanie was my daughter's fifth grade teacher, and she loved you.
I loved her.
I think it's cool that, you know, you have that kind of experience, and now you're in this type of position where you've been there, you can relate to the classroom and those experiences, so.
Any questions from the board? I have a few. So I, I remember when this first rolled out, because I was in the board when this first rolled out. And I remember at the beginning when we were making all these approvals of people moving into the teacher leadership positions. And I remember I kept thinking, well, there were, obviously, there were, there were a lot of great teachers at Pleasant Valley. A lot of them were asked to be a teacher coach, which takes them out of the classroom then, and then you have to replace them with somebody else. And I was, I hope that, you know, that's, that's becoming successful because otherwise it would be a shame to have these great teachers being in administrative role, not doing, you know, a, a great job at teaching students, which is what they've done, which is a good example of that. So how do you, how did you, how were you able to reconcile that on, on who to choose and make sure that the person that you're replacing is gonna be replaced with somebody who's just as beneficial to the students?
Oh yeah, good question. Well, like Mrs. Brockman said, we do take our, you know, our best, most talented teachers often surface in the interview process. And it's great because then we could just spread their capacity across more classrooms and to impact more students. So although I miss my time in the classroom, I know that my impact is large compared to those twenty-five beautiful students I would receive each year. But as far as your question about replacing them, I think our hiring process is extremely strong. The elementary administrative team and secondary administrative team were in great hands when they choose who the successors will be in those positions. And then our instructional coaches who, who were removed from the classroom are partnering right alongside them in those first two years strongly. So a first-year teacher is asked to complete two coaching cycles in their first year, and a second-year teacher to complete one. So even in their first two years here at PV, they've had a coach side-by-side in the classroom partnering with them for four to six weeks, times three. So, and those often create partnerships that, where the teacher's asking them to be in the room more often. So great things happen, I think, in our system because of that.
Then the second question is, as you know, across the nation, but even the state of Iowa, we've been having a hard time with teacher recruitment and obviously retention, although from the numbers, sort of related to their retention rate at Pleasant Valley is very good, and this is probably part of the reason why. But as, you know, recruitment becomes more difficult and more, there's more and more laws that are being passed regarding relaxing the requirements for teachers and, and, and the qualifications that are needed to become a teacher. How do you, with, with those changes occurring, how do you expect the TLS system to change based on that? Because you may be having more teachers that you're hiring that maybe might not be as, not have had as strict qualifications as you were used to in the past. And what will the, what will, how will TLS change in order to still maintain that still level of quality that we hope every student of PV gets?
That's a good point. I've got two points to answer your question. The first would be through our New Teacher In-Service, the four days of training in August, we meet as a team to continue to plan and refine what those look like. One proposal we've made for a change for this coming August would be that instead of having the teachers there all four days, that one of those days is actually fully in the building, where they can work side-by-side with their mentor to plan out their first ten days of instruction. So if a teacher's coming to us with less experience, I would imagine those first ten days being planned out for a full day with all the curriculum would be really important. Also, our junior high coaches piloted something new this year where they were in the classroom more often. So they actually took one period a day and were in the new teacher's classroom every day for two weeks, and then weaned off of that and, and just had that consistent support and modeling of best practices. So I think that could be one way. And then the second piece would be our mentoring program. So we have our mentors meet with our new teachers every other week, and then they report to me what the conversation was about, and I give them feedback and ask questions. So just having that open dialogue. Another piece to the mentoring program is a learning by doing PLC book study. So they're learning what a professional learning community should look like and sound like and feel like so that they can try to emulate that in their setting. So hopefully those two supports would help.
So maybe a little bit more oversight from, on, on the mentoring part for potentially depending upon the new, the new hires and their experience and qualifications.
That'd be great.
And finally, you know, this last year, we did increase the amount of half-days to twice a month instead of just that one half-day a month. And I know a lot of that was for the, the TLS program. So how is that, can you give us some feedback on how that's been going so far?
Yeah, so I know especially from the specials areas, that's been a really valuable time because we're a grade-level team, like, for example, third-grade PLC at Hopewell will be able to meet weekly, maybe twice a week during common prep time. A specials area team like art in all of the elementary buildings doesn't have that same opportunity. So I know they've most certainly used, utilized that second early-out day to be able to collaborate across the buildings for all specials areas. So that's been really important. And then at the PLC level in each of the buildings, I know our grade-level teams are tasked with curriculum items that they're working through, planning for the next week, making sure their instruction and assessment is aligned with each other. Great, so thank you for that extra time. The teachers appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, forgive me if I missed it, but how do you define one coaching cycle?
Four to six weeks in length, and it has to be around a student-centered goal. And it has to be related to an Iowa Core Standard or a few standards. So the coaches really outline learning targets with the teacher for those four to six weeks, and they have to partner with co-teaching and co-planning. So they're in the classroom at least two times, up to four in a week, but some coaches go more. Because once you get involved in that learning cycle, it's hard to step away for the moment. And then they analyze the data along the way. They talk about what instructional moves they'll try. So there's a lot of great conversations that happen, and at the end of it, they reflect, of course, you're reflecting throughout the whole time. But at the end, you really reflect on where the students are and what students need extra support.
And one person can do twenty-two of those in a year?
Yes, so our Student Center Coaching Model talks about doing it in rounds, and so you're able to do maybe four to six in a given round, so. Yeah, they work hard, but like Tony said, that's only because our administrators in the district has really supported protecting the time, time usage. So sixty percent of their time is all in coaching cycles, which is amazing.
When you do the surveys, which I think are great that you do to get feedback from the teachers that are, you know, utilizing this service or having this a part of their day, do they provide information too on, you know, what changes could be made, what more they would like to see? And if so, what kind of information do you gather from that? And how does that shape your plans for the following year?
That's a great question. At the end of the survey, we have an open response, where they could offer suggestions that they have, concerns they have, any ideas that they'd like to share. So we go through those results as, as a team here at Belmont. The principals also see those results, and we reflect on that. When we have enough money in the budget to consider an additional position, we also go through different rounds of getting feedback from our teacher leaders, our administrators, our instructional coaches, and hear what the needs are. So most recently, when we identified special education as the area that rose to the top, there were about eight other areas that followed special education. So there's plenty of needs, so as additional funds surfaced, I'm sure we could meet those needs. But that was the one that surfaced as the most, the priority this year.
Catherine, if I, if I could add just two points to, in response to that question. I think, first of all, the, the fact that we continue to evaluate that, I would want you to know that there is a, the SBRC, not the School Budget Review Committee, but the Site-Based Review Council, it's another SBRC. We love acronyms here, right? The, but that, that group is comprised mostly of people who are in TLS positions, but also some that are not. And so there's a constant ebb and flow and a constant review of data and input and forethought that goes into, okay, we are anticipating, because of our growing enrollment, so our growing enrollment indicates growing TLS money. And so what are we gonna think ahead? What are our needs in order to improve for our students, improve services for our students and in-service of our students? So that, that system piece is in there too. And then the other thing that I would want you to know, just in an eight-year history, eight years sounds like a long time, but it's not, especially for building a system of this magnitude. And I, I think we have examples of not only the, the, the name of roles has changed in eight years multiple times, like what we call instructional strategist now. It started in its inception as, as a instructional model, I believe, was the name of it. And the role has evolved as well, like the job description. So that SBRC also contributes to that. And I just think that's a, a good indicator of continual revision, refinement, to make this better for our teachers in service of our students.
I just have one more question, just clarifying roles because I, I still am a little confused. So you have instructional coaches, and then you have teacher leaders who teach, and then are, are kind of the first ones to implement some of the ideas that instructional coaches have?
Yes, yes.
And then they pass it on to the other.
Mm-hmm, yep, that's right.
And what about mentors? Is that a separate thing, or is that?
A couple of our mentors also serve in teacher leadership roles, but not many, like only five at the elementary level and one at the secondary.
Thank you.
I, I just wanna start by saying, this has been a great program over the last eight years. If we were to lose this program, what would we do? Because the work that it has instilled in all of us. If I use a gym-ism, maybe I'll call it gym-ism, but he always had the but-for statements. I mean, this is a but-for without Stephanie's work in leadership in this area, what she has done. Tony used the word integrity. Stephanie leads with integrity. I mean, she understands where the program is, where it needs to be, the data you saw, the state guidelines. We keep to what it's meant to be. And I think I would, because of that work, I'd rival what we are doing here across any district in the state when it comes to TLS. I really think we're doing it right. We have not arrived. I'm not gonna say we've arrived. And your question is spot on about taking feedback. I mean, I, I can't think of a program in our district where we get more feedback and more conversations about what it should look like and how we can improve it. Because that's what it's designed. And going back to the eight years, or the graphic, the, the great graphic you put up there is phenomenal because it just shows how this continues to evolve. And it will have to because our teachers keep changing, our kids keep changing, practices keep changing. But that's why this is here. So without Stephanie in this role, she's done an amazing job leading this program. Very proud of her, and her vision has definitely grown in this experience and trying to lead everybody. And that's a lot of people lead with a lot of opinions along the way, and she.
That's great with opinions.
She leads with grace. I mean, she can, she listens so well. I mean, we will sit around a table with a lot of opinions and what it can look like. And the way she can get people to come around and just by her listening, her calmness, she's a great leader for this program, so very proud of her work.
Thank you for those kind words. Appreciate it.
I remember when we, when it first came out, we applied for it the first year and didn't get it.
Right, it was a blessing.
And then we ended up applying a following year and then getting it. And now to see how much it's grown since that, it's pretty amazing in the years.
And how many people did we have that first year? I was on that midi, and we, I mean, how many, like, teacher leaders?
I wanna say we started to be at twenty-three percent, right around that, it was right around that twenty-five percent when we started eight years ago. Now it's just growing anywhere it is today.
Well, thank you again for all, and continue to, to, um, thank you for all your dedication and to continue to have this grow.
Thank you for all your support too. Thank you.
All right, there's no motion on that. Moving on, the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four hiring update. Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, just real quick, and then I'm actually gonna turn this over to our, our three directors down there, and they'll kind of give you an update. But we're still hot and heavy in the hiring season right now. You know, in this graphic that she, that Stephanie just shared about the retainment, that is critical to what we do. You know, again, as we always say, when we hire someone, we want them to, we wanna hire the brightest and the best. We want them to join our family and stay with our family. We wanna see them retire with us thirty-five years later. That's always our goal from day one. We're looking at hiring twenty-nine new staff members next year. Of those twenty-nine, thirteen are new positions that we are looking to add, which Mike, Jill, and Tony will talk about. We have seven retirements and nine resignations coming next year. And I know a lot of times the questions are always, well, why are people leaving? I would say of the nine that you have, that we've seen come across our table, most of them are because of spouse is moving, or they're moving back home to a different area. I will find out in a few weeks when I do interviews with them one-on-one to see if it's dissatisfaction. But I haven't heard of any dissatisfaction as to why they're leaving. I would say a few are leaving because of the time and commitment of teaching is, is a stressor. We have a couple of those, I would say, as well, which we hope, how can we resolve that through other ways such as TLS or other. But again, very proud of where we are at with hiring twenty-nine new people this coming year, or more, if it won't happen. So with that, I can give a turn over to Mike, Jill, and Tony. They can kind of give you an update as to where we are today and what they're seeing and, and plan, so.
I'll start with the, the youngest grades and just kind of updates. You've seen the resignations, obviously, in, in the hires that we have made recently. But just to recap them very succinctly, we've had an increase of point-five FTE at PE. That comes from the anticipated addition of kindergarten and fourth grade at Forest Grove, and then having Cody B. three sections. We have empirically proved we must add PE as a special. That's because PE meets with kindergarten through sixth grades every other day, or twice in a four-day cycle. Whereas the most comparable position to that would be science. But remember that science specialists only work with grades three through six. And so we've hit that tipping point with PE where we have to add that FTE in order to be able to share that. And so, and then we had Mr. Dennis's retirement, which was replaced by Mr. Damon. And the, the point-five FTE replacement, or addition, I should say, is, is Rachel Walker, who's currently serving in that capacity as a PE teacher and part-time aide at Cody. And so she will become a full-time PE teacher. We're excited to retain her and, and to bring her on full speed in the teaching capacity. And we're appreciative of her willingness to serve in that role this year, part-time, and then also as the aide. Then we have classroom teacher positions. We have fourteen positions at elementary. We have had some considerable internal shifting. I think there's been some interest in moving grade levels and just aspirations to try something new in the way of grade-level positions. And then we do have one teacher who we are awaiting their assignment to a general education teaching position. We have begun filling those positions, but we have not finished interviewing or filling the positions. We've started to offer positions to successful hires that have come through our interview process. We continue to interview altogether. Our principals have done a fabulous job, as busy- Our, uh, principals have done a fabulous job, as busy as their day is, reading resumes and keeping up to snuff with that. And I've just been facilitating the process, um, with them. So, um, as we have filled those, uh, teaching jobs that are currently open due to retirements and resignations, we have one kind of stuck point we're at right now. There's a domino effect that comes in this process after the internal hires. Then we have an internal who's looking to move positions from a special ed to that gen ed. So we have to see if there's a suitable and certified person for that specific position before we can assign them to that grade level opening that they aspire to fill. Um, if, if we can find a successful hire who is certified in their areas, and, and those are getting harder and harder to fill. Um, so we don't want to pull the trigger on filling those assignments until we know that we can do that. So we are interviewing for, um, special education positions that are open right now, both due to, um, the new TLS positions that Stephanie and Jill have worked together to navigate our, our introductory, uh, personnel into those, uh, special education coaching roles and then, um, anticipated openings that are coming from, from moves and, uh, resignations. And so once we get that clarification, if we can move that person into a grade level role, then, uh, or I'm sorry, once we get that clarification, if we can hire for that person, we will move them into that opening. And then we will continue to plow ahead with, uh, putting folks in the places that we see them most suitable, uh, bringing their skill sets to our teams, both within buildings and across the district at specific grade levels. So that's it for elementary.
Tony, the one that you were talking about, like you're waiting to see if you can fill that position before you move them, is that where it's possible that they aren't, like you won't just move them, right? You have to, like you might say, okay, we, we'll try again next year. Is that how you handle those kind of things or?
If we don't find a suitable.
Yeah.
Or certified replacement, yeah. It's a hard to build a position. Like say, for example, it's, uh, um, requires, uh, instructional strategist two and one of the labels, um, LDBD or ID, um, in order, the person has to be certified by the Board of Educational Examiners for us to put them in that position or obtain a conditional. And then we would have a series of different letters that we hold them accountable for meeting their deadlines, for obtaining that certification. But we want people who are certified to go into those roles so that we don't have to risk that and then have consequent shuffling or even pink slipping that we would have to do in those cases.
Just to piggy off, piggyback off of what Tony shared, the interviews coming up are for the elementary special education opening. So it's a little different at the secondary level. Um, like Stephanie mentioned, um, we have our elementary sped instructional coach hired. We're interviewing for our secondary special education coach on Wednesday. Um, we had, um, Gina Weaver retirement at the high school. We were able to hire, um, for that position. Um, also, we're really keeping a close eye on the numbers. And Mike, maybe you were going to talk about this, but we are looking at, um, the potential need to add like a strat one at the high school for next year because of the numbers coming up from the junior high are greater than the, the graduating students. So there's a need to do that. Um, we're also looking at an additional, hopefully strat two, special education teacher with that ID BD licensure. Um, we have, um, in our, um, low incident or level three programs that both Gina Meadows and Tom Isaacson serve right now. We have a couple of students, which is a really, really high levels of need in the area of both ID and BD. And so really just looking to better design a program, um, that's going to fit all of our students. Um, so we're looking at a potential add there. Um, we also have a couple of situations where we have students that are, um, being homeschooled right now and getting services, so working that out too with that position. And, um, then also, um, we do have an increase of our English, um, language learners. Um, so we are looking at the potential of adding a position, um, for our English language learners because of our increase in numbers there. I don't know if I missed anything?
No, you did. Our English language learners, when I started, when I got to, um, we had fourteen in the entire district. And now we are pushing somewhere upwards of a hundred and fifty. So it has been just unbelievable. And this goes to the saying that Dr. Rockley opens this meeting up every time, every single time. Not for some students, but for all students. And what Jill just described was we've, we have a group of students that have a special ed side of it, that have needs that we have not experienced before. Maybe one once in a great while, but now there's more. And we've got to address that. Before I go on to my side of it, um, I'm just looking at the hires. And Dr. Rockley, you talked about, uh, hiring teachers, good quality teachers. I will just tell you that you have approved at least four PV alum that have come back to us with Debbie's son, Amani Mayer, replacing, uh, Gina Weaver. Brittany Redmond, which is Brittany Weinshank, is coming back to us. And then, uh, Bailey Connors. So, I mean, if that was not an example of what Clayton talked about coming back that, and I'm going to tell you, having met at four different districts, with different boards, you set the stage, you, you set the stage, you create the weather for people coming back. And Dr. Rockley, I will have to say that when you come in and share your story with our new teachers, please do not ever underestimate the power of your story. It is huge. So I thank you for doing that. On our side of it, uh, Mr. Struse has worked with you and given you some, uh, you know, what our new monies are coming in. And then you kind of give us the direction. And then we work within that. So last week, I can tell you that from Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Debbie heard me on the phone, she saw me holding my head. And oh my God, that's what we did. Uh, Derrickson and I did last week was trying to put all the pieces together. We got the enrollment numbers in and, um, it's, it's just jaw dropping what we're doing. And so we have to do it within the budget that you set for us. So as of right now, we, I think we're there. We had to get pretty darn creative and think outside of the box on some of these things. But I will tell you that first and foremost, while on the two and six-year reports, you've heard me say, and our students have come back and said, oh, we love the dual credit classes, you know, keep expanding those, all that kind of stuff. And that's great. We do it when we can. I'm working on that for many, many, many years. And we're at a spot where we do offer an awful lot on our campus. But our instructors are first and foremost, they're high school instructors on our end. And if I get to a position where I have to serve high school classes, that's what I have to defer to first and foremost. So in this particular instance, to stay within the budget guidelines, I had to reach back out to Scott Community College and say, hey, do you have some instructors that can come over and help us with socia-, uh, with a sociology class? How about the accounting class? I need help on, on sign language. I need help across the board. So they've got the list and, uh, they're working to respond back to us so that they'll be sending instructors over to cover those college classes so that our adjunct instructors can go down and keep those class sizes lower at, you know, ninth and tenth, eleventh, so on and so forth. So the other piece is that, um, overload, overload classes are meaning that at the secondary level, you're teaching more than six out of eight periods. So you're teaching seven out of eight. And it has been a lot of years since I've had to do that. Tracy, you know, I don't know if you ever had to do overload. But I'm telling you, yeah, the money's nice, but there isn't much of you left by the time the day is over. There's just not. I hate doing that to our staff. Our staff have oftentimes stepped up and said, yeah, we know the position you're in. I'll take it because it's best to keep class size down and so forth. But we, we got to continue to keep trying to address that. And so we tried to do that. I was not able to do it across the board in all areas. But we've taken some steps to try and, and lower those a little bit. So that's another thing, that you keep teachers or it doesn't. So we treat them that way. That's, after we have our next guy BPS and we have our negotiation meeting, we've got those agreed upon statements that both sides said, this is what we're going to try and work towards. And we tried to do that very hard.
One little additional point I would want to make, just to, it's noteworthy, just like special education, there is a weighting. There's assigned to students who are weighted a level one, a level two and a level three. Um, same is true for EL students. So as our EL population continues to grow, there are two classifications. There is the emerging, which we get an additional point two-six on the funding, uh, amount for. So it's a point two-six in addition to the one FTE for, or enrolled student. And then, uh, for the progressing, it's point two-one. There's not a big discrepancy between those two. But just so you know, for those hundred and fif-, approximate hundred and fifty to two-hundred students, um, we do get about a quarter, um, of student funding.
But that still doesn't cover the teachers that are required to be with those students though, right? I mean, it's not really.
No, basically, that's, that is intended to fund, uh, the EL teachers that are providing the additional service to the students.
But it's a chunk because it's like seventy-five hundred dollars-ish.
Yeah.
Better than nothing.
Correct.
It's what helps, but it doesn't cover it all.
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, a couple of things, next week, um, we are hoping to be interviewing for the Director of Secondary Ed next week. The following week will be the High School Principalship. They'll probably take a week off and look at the elementary dean positions that we have to interview for. So that's still moving forward there. Um, we'll see where that lands, hopefully starting next week. Um, you know, I think just, one of the things that they've mentioned, I, and, and Debbie brought it up as well. And you talk about the number of new PV kids that we have coming in who are PV grads who are going to be teaching for us next year. Joel Wilcox, I don't even know Joel Wil-, Wil-, Wilcox, but he's a custodian and maintenance for us. He'd come in last year after opening and said, you guys need to figure out how many, what's your percentage of PV grads that are working for the district right now? And we'll figure that out because it is a pretty amazing number, which is pretty neat to see. And we talk about growing your own and having kids. And kids wanting to come back and be a part of the district, that says a lot about the relationships they've built with teachers and what, why they want to be a teacher and come back.
Joel is one.
Yeah. And Joel Wilcox is a graduate of the district. Same as Stephanie Thier sitting over there as well. So, um, they just, it's, those are the things you need to see. Was that, yeah, Ms. Damon and, you just thought this office, you just go down the hallway, you got Chris Smith, you got Debbie, you have Kelly Hadler, Lisa Paper. I mean, it's just, it is a cool thing to see. And what happens is they take pride in it because there's different sacrifices that we have to give. And, and we do give some sacrifices and. But you know, and I just, there's some interesting things right now. If you're watching legislation, I'll just share this with you. Um, there's a big thing in the legislation right now about five percent of your cost cannot be, five percent of your administrative costs, your administrative costs cannot be over five percent of your total budget.
It's capped, right?
Yes, it's capped. And we're watching that closely, but they sent a graphic of nineteen ninety-three, which is legislators saying in nineteen ninety-three, here's where numbers were, and here's where they are in two thousand twenty-one. And they're seeing a great increase of administrators and different administrative costs over those years. And they want to now limit this back and push back. When you go across our student teacher ratio, our pupil to all staff ratio, our pupil to administrative ratio, we are, this is not probably a proud moment, but I'm, why I'm highlighting this is because it's what we care and we work hard for our kids. Administratively speaking, we are the last district in the state when it comes to pupil to administrator experience or ratio. The last district. We have a ratio of one to one hundred and fifty-four students to administrators in our district. Um, so when we come to the table about adding administrators, we are administrative light. And we've known that for years because we put the money back into our teachers. And that's important because it makes a difference for our kids. But even our pupil to others ratios, we are at least seventh or lower across all districts in the state of Iowa. So when people say, how are you using your money? We're not using it towards administrative costs. We're putting it back in the classroom to make a difference for our kids. Um, so I'm very proud of that, but it comes at cost. It goes back to you have people who care about kids. And that's what makes a difference. Um, so kind of a low moment, but yet a proud moment in where we are and how we manage things in our district and try to be good stewards of money. And we've reached out to our, uh, to our legislators to say that five percent cannot be passed. It's not good.
Because in that time period, how much more administrative burden have you guys taken on? Let's say on, on a state level, what percentage?
I could not quantify that.
But has it been more or less?
Probably more. Just because of our growth of our, I mean, our district, we have grown so much in our district that I think you see that as a, but again, thanking the board for what we have added the last few years, the dean of students at the elementary levels the last couple of years, Jill's position, which is greatly needed, looking at another dean of students next year. I mean, we've been trying to catch up to where we need to be, but, um, and I told our legislators today, I said, from an SSA standpoint, that is why we need to continue to see an increase in SSA, um, to try to help us add positions when we are growing. Um, another one, just let you know from, uh, there's a bill out there that will pass, but to pay student teachers. Great idea to help kids. But when you look at that and you look at the impact it has, the maximum you can pay them is the per deum amount for a beginning teacher, okay? So if we were to do that, we average thirty or more student teachers a year in our district. Why? We want to give back to teachers, we want to give them back, we want to give them great experience. Number two, we usually hire some people out of that pool of people. So it's a good way for us to see that we are giving back. If we were to pay them at the maximum level you could, that'd be four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That is five to six positions that you'd be have to give up in order to make that payment. So again, those are just things we've got to keep thinking about as we move forward. And when we talk to legislators, keep those things in mind, that great ideas, but sometimes from a cost standpoint, you just can't afford it.
Well, unless they fund it.
Correct.
Then it's a good idea.
The show I shared today, I said SSA needs to be higher, otherwise it has a negative impact on us. But again, thanks to the work of all these people and your leadership and your support, we're doing some amazing things with great people in our district that I'm very, very proud of.
I think we, I can't underscore and want to emphasize what Mr. Zimber said about the fact that a lot of our teachers have stepped up to the plate to take that extra load. And I've always said this all the time whenever I talk to teachers is that it's just another example of what motivates teachers. And it's, it's, it's about doing what's best for kids and student achievement. And that's why a lot of them are doing it. And especially in this environment, we just really need to continue to thank our teachers for stepping up to the plate and helping all of our students in this district because without that mentality, without that, um, outlook, it'd be very difficult for us to not have gaps. And so I just want to, again, emphasize that we need to really be thanking our teachers in this district for the extra work that they're doing for the sake of what's best for the district and for the students.
And that's all people, all of our employees, everyone.
Yes.
Well, we'd like to thank our board because everybody here appreciates, I mean, not here, but in this district appreciates the board. And knows our boards have always been of the highest caliber. Education matters so much, maybe more than ever.
I agree. Anything else, anybody? Well, thanks for continuing to, um, work with the budget and filling the positions for all of you. Um, that is basically it on new business. Um, just wanted to remind everybody that at the end of April, there is a special ISB conference going on on the twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth in Dinkeny, if anybody's interested. Um, and then our next, uh, board meeting is going to be Monday, April tenth at six P.M. And then our, um, next board meeting on April twenty-fifth will be at five-thirty because of some, um, events going on later that evening with the school.
That should be April twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, is that it?
Did I write it down wrong?
Yeah, it should be April twenty-fourth, you're right. So it's on Monday, April twenty-fourth at five-thirty. Is there anything else for the, um, going order?
Yeah, it's five-thirty, we can do the district band concert that night over at the Iber Center. So Mr. Zimber will not be present at that board meeting.
All right, if, if, this meeting is adjourned.